The mowing restrictions within the array itself due to the seed mix trying to promote a variety of wildflower and vegetation that's beneficial to wildlife habitat. There was some concern about regular mowing and not giving the seed, the vegetation time to bear seed. And so we've worked with Laura Kraus to basically revise a note on the detail sheet specifying that the pollinator mix be used solely within the array area, only the pollinator mix with the idea of the vegetation for the most part is clover, multiple clover varieties which are low growing, so that will allow us to adhere to the mowing once a year late in the season. And then we've gone with the showy wildflower, mix of the showy wildflower and pollinator mix outside of the array where of course we are amenable to the once a year mowing restriction as well late in the season. So not to belabor the rest of the issues, outstanding issues unless there was a specific question or something that Laura had specifically.
I've reviewed all of the revised materials and we have no further comments. The only, I guess, additional discussion would be the special conditions that we recommended. So we have several special conditions in our comment letter that we recommended. One regarding the access which we, I don't know if you, do you want to go through all the special conditions that we're recommending? Charlie? Should I go through all of the special conditions that we're recommending?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got it right.
Yeah, okay. So we're recommending a special condition that if the project requires a different form of access due to the town of Dayton's interpretation of the legal opinion, the applicant shall reappear before the commission for review and approval of the design. We've discussed this. We, another one would be not, specifically not confirming the BBW boundary flags, D-42 through D-68 in the order of conditions because they weren't comprehensively evaluated because they wouldn't have affected the project design. A requirement that the DEP Construction Period Pollution Prevention and Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan as well as the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan both be submitted to the commission prior to construction. And then also having a pre-construction meeting with the commission prior to construction. Another requirement that no stockpiles or construction staging areas shall be located within 100 feet of the wetlands. No grubbing is proposed or shall be permitted outside of the perimeter fence. It was a perimeter fence around the whole array. Outside of that, they are going to be cutting it. No grubbing to be conducted. If there is any need to de-water when installing the stream crossing, they should notify the commission. They don't believe they're going to have to, but if that's necessary, they should provide the methodology to the commission before conducting a de-watering. A condition requiring strict, to be, so that all of the vegetation is managed according to the plan, just a special condition saying that all vegetation be managed according to the plan. Should, they should already do that, but having it in the order of conditions is always a good idea. And that's it. Those are, those are the special conditions that we're recommending. I don't know if there's any questions.
We're amenable to everything she's listed.
Covered all the bases.
Any questions on this project?
Yes.
Please, state your name.
Lauren Bosale, 1680 Pine Street. You were supposed to have received a letter from Peter on the planning, the engineer on the planning board. Was that received?
Yes.
It was received. Okay. And the fire chief was supposed to be, I don't know, I guess last meeting he hadn't checked something?
That was really covered under planning. The fire department coordination is usually done under planning. It's not really a conservation issue.
Oh, okay. All right. And Chris, I did have a question about, I'm very confused about a berm.
All right, so I know where the confusion came from. And it was when Attorney Pacella, who was just recently involved in the project due to the access issue, he was speaking about the screening and he had mistaken, he had misquoted where the berm was going to go. And the berm is really associated with a basin here. And during the planning board sidewalk, Peter from GZI had actually recommended using the berm to plant screening on top. There was no berm along the northern edge.
There isn't, because I thought I saw one on the, on the plan. I thought it said a berm. Is it being raised at all?
No, no.
Then what's the slope for? That you said there was a slope there. What is, what's causing the slope?
There, well, I mean, it's an, we're basically not doing any major grading along this northern edge. There's a small little diversion swale at the corner of the road, but other than that, it's all, the thick line work you see in there is the double row of plantings.
Right, but I had asked you on the, can I just?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So this part right here, you said it was a slope the last time I asked you, so I don't know where the slope is coming from.
I mean, I mean, it's, I'm not sure exactly what you mean, but I mean, this is, the road is in there.
This is the road.
Correct, yeah.
And then there's this space.
Yes. It's just, there's actually, there is a small little berm here.
So how high is that?
Just a chase, I mean, it's.
Because it looks like it's seven feet.
No, no, no.
No?
No, it's only maybe like a foot, maybe too high, not even. I mean, it's pretty minimal.
And what's that for?
It's just the way that the road grades tied in, the way that the program tied it in. It really, I mean.
Because it pushes this out, so.
No.
Well, it kind of does. But do you see what I'm saying? These are bumped out, if you can see it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that is because of that?
Not really. I mean, the, we're maintaining a certain distance with the fence line to the panels, more or less. And so when we had pulled this back, I know that when two other people in our office ran the vehicle turning for the fire department, they had left a certain width off, and I'm not sure if that was attributed to that or not.
Well, then that could be moved over, which could.
I mean, I don't know without getting into the drawing and looking at it.
I mean, it just doesn't, it's something, because it's about 10 feet. So it's something.
Yes, it is 10 feet, yeah.
So it's a little, and I can't seem to find anything that states what it is.
It's just open grass area, basically.
Oh, it's a grassed area.
It's just, it's a, it's a, between the road and the fence. It's just a straight grass that's, you know, at a width that's maintained.
What would it be used?
Nothing.
She was thinking they don't need to clear as much. Well, could you find out about that? I mean, but I don't know what that is.
Sure, yeah, I mean, right now it's, it's nothing. It's just a, it's a dead area, I guess.
I mean, I just.
The access gate here is 16 feet wide. So again, not getting in electronically, I would guess that this width is governed by the 16-foot wide access gate. And so it's just, the way that the fence geometry is, is that it just snapped a straight line up and then angled over. But there's nothing in between the road and the fence if you, it's just going to be.
Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do. So I just didn't know what that was.
This is, I guess I have a base within the 100-foot buffer as well. So, I mean, could the fence line be moved closer to the road?
I mean, it would, you know, again, I'm not 100%, but it, I believe that this line here is driven by the fact that you have a 16-foot wide access gate there.
Okay.
And so to not create kind of a tunnel effect and just snap it back in and create kind of an awkward situation, it just, we elected to run it straight up there.
That was my, I don't, I just didn't understand.
I mean, if you can tuck it in, we can certainly look at tucking it in. You know, I certainly don't want to constitute a plan change at this juncture in the game. But again, not being in the CAD drawing and seeing exactly what was held, more than likely that's the 16 feet. It was just due to the width of the access gate there.
Is the concern that you just want, that you want to be further away?
Well, it kind of, I was curious because it bumps it out, and so if it bumped it in, that leaves a little bit more.
Yeah, but like you said, with the, with the gate being there, it would be kind of weird to bring it back in. I don't leave.
All right, well, I just, it just, I know I asked you last time, but it just doesn't.
Sure, yeah, I know. It's a good question.
It didn't.
Yeah, and like, there's, there's a reason for everything you see. It may not be apparent, you know, looking at, it may just look like a dead area. We could just pull the fence in, but, you know, again, to pull the fence in, we would need to slide the gate in or create kind of a tunnel, funnel effect there. And I know that we were very careful when we ran the vehicle turn for the fire chief's requirements to give him plenty of room, at least a two-foot shoulder.
And I just had questions about the, was it your request to change the green giants?
Yes.
It was?
Yes.
Because what it, so it was changed to regular apabites?
As well as.
As well as hemlocks and?
Red, white pine.
White pine?
Yep.
Our concern with that is, we've had regular apabites and they're no longer there, and you as well, because they're no longer there because of the deer. And whether it looks more natural to the area, if, if in years they're not there, then that's worse than having the green giants.
Is that not a requirement though, that you have to maintain those plants? I mean, that's part of.
Yeah, well, yes, so as part of.
And if they don't succeed, you have to.
Yeah, then we're, it's on us to reestablish them. And, you know, speaking to Ms. Bosale's comment, you know, we would just, you know, at the time we select the species, just ask the commission, as long as we're native, to work with us to allow for substitutions, that if that is a concern or if it, you know, we could plant something that's native within jurisdiction or areas that's going to provide protection against that. Just, I'm trying to coordinate with the guys at Goddard because they're the ones that kind of steered me in the direction as far as the species within jurisdiction. And so I'll ask them, and, you know, again, if they say, oh, you know, Chris, that's a good point, maybe you could try this species instead, as long as it's native. And, you know, and I know there's a note on the plant list as well that allows for substitutions with the commission's approval. But again, like Laura said, that it's part of the planning and, you know, there's a landscape bond which is separate. You know, this is governed under the actual approval itself where we're going to have to come back and reevaluate it. And if, you know, we plant a species that the deer take kindly to and make it so that it's not going to thrive, then we're obligated to replace those with something that is more appropriate and provide the screening as well.
Out of the bond money or?
No, that would be separate. The bond money is for, in the event, you know, something doesn't happen that's supposed to really, that's the bond money. It's kind of a protection mechanism. But the language on, for, as part of the planning approval is very specific where we're planting all of this stuff and then in the first non-foliary season, we're going to come back and reevaluate it for the effectiveness of the screening, whether it seems to be thriving like we think it is going to. And if something is, has died off or additional holes need to be filled in, that's separate from the bond. You know, that's a requirement as far as the special permit.
Because all the green giants are on the east end and they were allowed to keep them.
They're allowed with the commission's jurisdiction.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's full north, unfortunately, but the way it shakes out is this whole northern edge and a portion of the northeastern corner is all within jurisdiction. And so that's where the substitution was made to go within native arbor area as opposed to the green giant cult of our type.
They won't last for two years.
They really won't.
Nope.
I mean, we've had them, where they've gone because they eat as high as they can and then the rest is there, but it's all there below it.
Sure, and like I said, the, the planning board has a mechanism to ensure that if that does happen, that they're replaced with something that's more suitable. And like I said, in the meantime, we're going to find out some additional information from our landscape slash wetland scientists. And if there is a species that's going to provide the same screening and address that concern, then we'll certainly.
And the box.
Propose that.
The boxwoods were taken away. And again, like, I'm told that deer would starve before they'd eat a boxwood. They won't eat a boxwood.
I have boxwood, you don't touch it.
I don't know.
They're also not native and that's, and you're planting those quite close, they're proposing to plant them quite close to the resource areas. So, you know, that area is supposed to be providing habitat for those species. I mean, that's part of what, what they're there for. So, you know, to say that it's going to be a reforestation and then provide not native species.
I understand that, but there's nothing, you know, native about a solar field either. That's, you know, yes, you have something not native, but maybe you need something not native to conceal.
I think there are other alternatives out there that will still adhere to being a native variety, will still be able to provide, you know, kind of the instantaneous screen we're talking about with the plants that exist. And that we just select something that speaks to the, you know, the pest concerns as far as, you know, deer and stuff like that. I know, I'm confident there's a solution out there. I just, I'm not, you know, I know, I don't know everything about plants and so that's why I'm trying to work with our consultant who's well versed in this stuff. And, you know, like I said, hopefully maybe I'll even get, hopefully I'll get some word back from him and just, you know, I can even just throw out the species that we're thinking of. But, I mean, as soon as we get something, there's notes on the plan that will allow us to perform substitutions and it would just be, I would presume, just a letter to the commission, just saying this is what we'd like to plant in place of the native arborite due to the fact that their concerns that it might be prone to, you know, eat food for deer.
Out of line, if it doesn't work, you'll fix it?
Yeah, exactly. That's the bottom line. There's a mechanism in place for that to happen, so it's going to be left, you know, on their own, on their own dime or their own burdens.
How long is that in effect?
It's really up to the planning board, but typically it's two years. They'll evaluate landscape for a period of two years and then it's up to them. Each project's different, but they could hold the bond for a certain amount of time as well to ensure longevity of that assurance.
Anyone else?
I move that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you. There he is.
So I'm, we had a follow-up to the last meeting, which was submission of the INRAD and a review of the findings from your consultant, the Dover Armstrong folks who confirmed the delineation of the wetlands and also noted a possible vernal pool on the property that's adjacent watering lot one on Main Street. And I submitted the services of John Delano, who's familiar with the property. And John has submitted a report which he emailed to Charlie and I imagine Laurel has a copy of that. And John's findings were that the property that's in question, the southeast corner of that property, does not meet the definition based on the bylaws of the town nor the state, does not meet the definitions, multiple definitions of vernal pool. It's not a confined basin and at the, at the southeast corner as, which is where the vernal pool was noted, is actually a DPW basin. That basin is clogged with vegetation, leaves, and is basically not drained as, as it should. Also, the, the property doesn't border any, any banks or body of water, water bodies, there's no water bodies nearing the property, so it fails on that definition as well. And also the topography is pit and mound form without any confirmed depressions in there which would indicate a vernal pool. That's sustainable for two months during the spring and summer months. So John is, so I have an extra copy of the report if anyone would like it.
I have a copy.
Charlie's got a copy.
Oh, okay. You get one, yeah. I just.
Thanks. There's also some, some images which show the drain and the condition of the, a lack of the draining that's occurring in that, in that corner, which is about, which is 300 or 250 feet away from lot one.
Charlie forwarded me the, the report and Marty and I spoke about it today. And first of all, we're not really sure how you, I mean, I guess, what's the request is that there's no, the ORA has already been issued, so.
It's been issued with a qualifier that inaccurate is one of the, one of the conditions are inaccurate. Stating a vernal pool doesn't even say possible vernal pool, so I don't feel that that properly reflects the, my consultant's findings on the property at all. And I would like that adjusted and corrected.
So then that would mean you'd have to reopen the hearing then, right? Would, do you not need to refile?
Well, I haven't filed. I just received the, I just received the form and I don't know if there was a mail issue.
We approved, we approved the, the INRAD for the line. And I explained to him that when he files, he would have to show on the plan the potential vernal pool.
Yes.
Whether it affected the property or not, I don't know.
Right.
And it probably won't.
Yeah, I agree.
So to that, and I understand, I did understand that my consultant's not identifying a vernal pool, so there is not a vernal pool to draw a plan around.
Wait a minute now, the only way you can determine it's not a vernal pool is in the springtime.
Yes.
Now, it's draining right now. It might be not be draining then. It always could hold water.
Well, it's not draining because of the DPW basin is not.
I could see clearly on the, the photos that he sent that the water is running under the street.
Yes.
Not as fast as it should, but I can see water running into culvert.
Well, you also can see a foot or two of vegetation leaves and, and, you know, clutter that's, that's accumulated around the opening.
I understand that, but the water is running under the street or into the street, wherever it's going, down the street, I have no idea. But I clearly can see water running into the culvert. It may be clogged and not enough water running through it, but there's water running.
They've had excessive amount of rain.
Yeah.
So there's naturally water that's going to run.
But it may, when it stops running, when the water doesn't run, or if it keeps, continues running, then there's not a problem.
Right.
But if it stops running and in the springtime, the right species occupy that pool, it could be a vernal pool. And the only way you can determine that it's not a vernal pool is in the spring of the year. That's the only way it is. Right now, one of the things in your favor is that water is running out of it. But if the water stops running out of it, there's still a depression there, then it becomes a potential vernal pool.
So the way they're saying there's not a depression is pit and mound topography.
Legally, the only way that we can determine that it's not a vernal pool is to examine it in the springtime. If there are no species there that occupy a vernal pool, then it's not a vernal pool. It could be a swimming pool, it could be whatever it wants to be, but it won't be a vernal pool. But right now, you're asking us to consider it's not a vernal pool, can't do that.
No, I'm not, I'm not, well, I'm, I'm reporting and bringing forward what facts, the findings of my consultant, A, B, the wetland lines, so there's no high water mark that's going to extend beyond the existing delineation.
Well, he drew a 100-foot dotted line there.
Yeah.
But a vernal pool in our bylaw, that's the limit of a vernal pool. Our bylaw says there's another 100-foot buffer beyond that little dotted line.
Understood, but that doesn't, that, that neither of those 100.
It may not, it may not. It may, if it doesn't affect your property, then there's not a problem. But right now, I'm not prepared to declare it's not a vernal pool.
We can't.
We can't. I saw the evidence, I appreciate John Delano's work, he's on the right track. But, and the only way we can say it's not a vernal pool is when you prove it's not. And the only time you can, can prove it is in the spring of the year.
So what do you want in the spring? To finally close you to this and let us do what we want to do with our property?
If you, if, in the spring of the year, if you find that pool is still there.
There's no pool there, but what, so what, in the case of no pool, being standing water.
You don't, you don't, we won't know if there's no pool there or not.
That's right, so, but you're talking like there's a pool there. So what would you want if there's no pool there?
There's a possibility of a pool there.
Okay.
If there's no pool there, in the spring of the year, which is like three months out, three and a half months out, you can have, your man tested, we can have, I consultant tested. If there's not a pool, then there's no pool. But right now, it can happen.
So what would you want though? I, right now I brought.
We want it tested for a pool in the springtime.
And then what? And then what do you, what do I bring forward to present?
Get a determination and then we'll go from there.
So I have a determination, it's not good enough?
You don't, you don't have, it's not the spring.
You can't do it, you gotta do it in the spring.
This is, we're coming up, and another week or so will be into winter.
Yep.
21st of the month is the first day of winter, so we have to wait till the spring, which I believe is the 21st of March. I might be wrong, I'm not sure.
But March, April, those are the best months to do the test.
Well, yeah, it, it really depends on the year, but what I would suggest is find a couple of certified pools in the town to see if there are egg masses in those and then go to this and determine whether or not there are egg masses here. Because that'll tell you regionally whether or not egg masses are being produced at that time.
That's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
But we can't do it now.
Yeah, you can't do it now.
And then what? What do I bring forward? Do I bring a plan? Do I bring another report or piece of paper? What, pictures? What are you saying, suggesting or agreeing this time?
Why don't we wait until spring and discuss it then?
Well, I'd like to come prepared.
You can't come prepared until you have the final product. Right now, we just explained you don't have the final product. You have standing water that's draining. That's one thing against vernal pools. But it may still, there may be a depression there that retains water and it's not draining into the street. If it drains continuously, then there's probably no problem.
Right.
If it's still draining in May and April, then there's no vernal pool.
One thing that also, I mean, if that, if the hood wall is cleaned out, it might help. help.
It'll be cleaned out. Different location, but it's not gonna affect your, your lot.
Property regardless.
Right, well, it, well, it is affecting it, because I can't do anything with the property until, until this gets resolved. So, I mean...
I don't know what to tell you.
Okay.
Charlie, where is this?
That Lot 1 on Main Street. It's pretty high up on the hill. It's right next to the Pachesco property.
Right, and the vernal...
He doesn't know the Pachesco property.
The pool is actually on land he owns that's adjacent to this revised Lot 1.
All right, well, that Lot 1's not telling me anything.
So I gotta, I gotta...
A locust map.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for.
So this is the lot, this is the property in question here, and this is, this is the location of the possible vernal pool, and this is where the drainage basin is.
Okay, so this is, okay, William Street, okay, so, okay, William Street, wait, where is it now?
So this is the, this is the Lot 1.
You approved the INRAD.
And this is the, this is the drain here, this is the area, the southeast corner here is where the...
Can I have this?
You may.
Okay. All right, so that way, okay, so I know where...
So this is, this is approximately 250 feet from here.
So here's the, this power line right here?
No, no, it's a stone wall.
Okay, so it's, so it's this lot that we're dealing with, and this is right here.
This is the lot in question here that, that's impacted by the...
We approved the INRAD on that line.
By the bordering vegetation wetland. So this is the lot.
But over here is where you're...
This is where the basin is and the potential, possible...
So how many feet are you from here to here?
From here to here is 250 feet. This is 399 feet from here.
So you're gonna be going in over here, right?
Correct, yes.
So how would that, if you're beyond that...
Wetland line, which we are, we determined that.
How is that even gonna affect you over here? So we, so the vernal pool...
So then why is it an issue?
If that, if that is, the vernal pool is 100 feet beyond the high-water mark, so that's gonna take you to here. Then the conservation has another 100-foot jurisdiction.
Correct.
So you would be, so if you're gonna do something over here, you're still 100 feet even beyond our jurisdiction.
I understand, this is 250 feet from here to there, and this is 399 feet from here to this.
So you're not trying to do anything here?
No, no. No, I just want, I just wanna get, the wetland delineation has been confirmed, I just don't think the...
When Laura did the delineation, she checked the delineation that John Delano sat down, she noted that there was a potential vernal pool on the next lot.
Yeah.
And that's what we're dealing with right now.
But it's likely it'll affect you.
No, it isn't, but it, but I have, but I have an INRAD that had, that stating there's a vernal pool on there. First of all, that has not been determined, and secondly, it's, you're right, it shouldn't have, it shouldn't have a bearing, but it does, because it's been documented that there's a vernal pool on the INRAD report.
Potential.
Well, no, no, it says there's one. It doesn't say potential.
Okay.
I have a question. When it was said vernal pool, it wasn't in the spring. It was the fall when it was determined or said or...
Well, that was after the rains began.
It was stated as possible, but, so anyway, the INRAD states vernal pool, doesn't state anything about a possible vernal pool. But, but any case, I wanna, whether it's possible or actual, I wanna get it resolved and, and get a clean INRAD.
But again, we go back to the regulations. The wetland regulations say that you can only determine a vernal pool is or isn't in the springtime if the, if the criticism that...
I'm not arguing that point. I'm not arguing that point. I'm not arguing it. Okay. What I'm, what the point is, is that the lot's 250 feet away from that. So we're, even with 100-foot and extra 100-foot buffer...
So I don't understand why, why you're so uptight. Half the people, and I shouldn't say half the people, but there's probably 100 or more people in town that have vernal pools on their properties.
Understood.
And, and...
And I'm not, I'm not uptight, I'm trying to get to the bottom and understand what I need to do, but I have an INRAD that states I've got a vernal pool that's affecting the wetland deline, the B V W wetland delineation. That's, that's what I'm, yeah, that's the issue that I have.
It didn't affect the delineation. Delineation was what you asked for, that's what you got. But delineation was approved. Your wetland line is approved on that lot.
So you are, that vernal pool is more than 200 feet on the side of it?
It is, it's well beyond 200 feet.
So it, so it has no bearing upon your actions?
I understand, but the, but I'm looking at a Form FA, Form B, that says there's a vernal pool there, and that's inaccurate.
All that INRAD says, the ORAD says, is that the wetland line was approved, the potential vernal, vernal pool that Laura saw, potential, was not approved. That's all it tells, says on there. It's not approved.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I agree, well, it doesn't, it says a little more than that. It says the wetland delineation, which is the whole purpose of the INRAD, were found to be inaccurate and cannot be confirmed. So you're basically saying the, in one state, one section, you're saying, yep, it's accurate, wetlands...
It says exactly what it says.
It's there, and then another section...
You can't confirm the vernal pool because it's, it's not time to confirm it. It's a potential vernal pool.
Okay. All right.
It shouldn't affect anything.
Well, it's affecting the INRAD, it's, it's...
How is it affecting the INRAD?
Well, because you're stating there's a vernal pool there.
You petitioned for a wetland line.
Our bylaw states it's a vernal pool until you prove it's not.
I've, I've had a consultant, you know, preview it, and it doesn't pass.
Well, we do it in spring.
And I understand, I understand that.
Well, you don't understand it because you won't accept it. You won't accept it. You have to wait till springtime.
Okay, thank you.
Should we just continue that, Charlie?
No, I thought it was over. I was done.
We're not continuing anything. Mr. Dickerson has, has applied, we used an INRAD, he asked to be here tonight to explain to what his consultant found, and, and he's here, he talked, we talked, it's over. I'm just gonna put a little cross right there.
Michael Wheeler.
Maple Swamp Road should be next on our agenda.
2707 Park Avenue.
No, no, the Steel Maple Swamp Road.
Number three.
Maple Swamp Road, abbreviated...
John DeValley. Sorry, I did, yes, yes.
Would you like to see the plans on the tripod, or if you just wanna...
All right, what do you got?
I was told I should bring some site plans over with a proper stamp.
Let's take a look at it.
Who wants one?
Drop one here, drop one there, we're good. Okay. Now, Laura, you did this one too?
Yes.
Wow.
We are keeping you informed.
Oh, yes, it's all good.
Where do you get that?
Ah, yeah.
Well, it's...
It's there, but it's really hard to see. Do I have that, am I having...
My name is Rod, I work for Ecosystem Solutions, and we did the delineation.
Does Rod have a last name?
Spinet, S.P.I.N.E.T.T.E.
Spell that again.
S.P.I.N.E.T.T.E.
This might be more helpful as a lot.
Oh, yes, that, that is much better. Okay, Maple Swamp. Okay, I'm looking to see...
That's Maple Swamp.
Wait a, wait, okay, Oak, okay, Oak Street, okay, so we have, we're, we're gonna go up here, the road, so this is way, this is way in the back?
Yeah, it's near the, the fields, kinda near those, I think they're baseball fields, maybe.
Athletic fields.
Athletic fields back there, yeah.
Okay, is there access to that?
Access.
Is there, is there a road to go in there?
No, no, it's, it's completely undeveloped.
There's a dirt path.
Oh, there's a dirt path, sorry, there is a dirt path, you can't drive back there. There is a dirt path.
Going in from Oak Street, is it before the athletic fields or...
It's on the...
It's on the right before the athletic fields.
On the north side.
On the north side, yep.
Where the Oak Street, Maple Street. It's right across from Lot 6 and 7 that we approved in the...
You approved that one already, yep.
Matter of fact, the stream runs right across the road.
Right.
And, and, Prezusoma kept part of the property in this, this little lot. This is what we're dealing with over here, I believe.
Both, both lots 1 and 2 are part of Lot 4, I think, right now, definitely they are. So back in September, we reviewed the wetland boundaries and agreed with the locations of the A series and the Mean Annual High series, but we observed three vernal pools. Also, there are two small ice legs as well. The vernal pools are on this lot.
On this lot?
It's all one lot.
Which one do we hear, this one or that one?
It's one lot, right now. It's one lot, those are part of this eventual subdivision, I believe, but it's one lot right now. This is, this is all one lot, the whole thing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so here we are. So this is Maple Swamp Road right here, and...
So this is the stream that comes in here, right here, and then this wetland back here is this whole area back here.
Okay, so where is this stream here, though?
It's way, yeah, it's down here.
Oak Street down here.
Okay.
And Oak Street's like right over here.
So this red area that is marked, this is the lot?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so this is, all right, so this is the...
But this line is okay?
Yes.
This line is okay?
Oh, the lines are okay.
Okay, even this one?
Yes, we, we had them locate the mean annual boundaries of these three vernal pools, and they put them on the plans, and they, all of the IBW flags are on the plans. So there's, there's isolated wetlands around both of these vernal pools, and then there's this BDW extends around this vernal pool as well.
And all these buffers, these dotted lines are okay?
They're okay, yes.
Okay, so we got wetlands, this is all wetlands back here?
Yes.
Wetlands here?
Yep.
And...
Wetlands and a stream.
Wetlands and a stream, so you're, okay, 100-foot buffer here, is this perennial?
Yes.
Okay, so we have perennial here, perennial off the, so how far are we out here from, from the stream, roughly?
Yeah, let's just do the plan.
Yeah, we didn't go back there, it's really far.
Okay, all right, okay, but eventually that, but this is wetlands here too?
Yes, yeah, it's all wet, the whole back.
So potential builds would be here and here probably, potential build.
There'll be nothing here, because we, I believe that the idea is to only have builds here because they didn't, this wetland actually extends this way.
Okay.
And we commented on that, and they didn't delineate it, so we are recommending that that be a condition as part of the ORAD, saying that additional wetlands exist in that corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
What we're looking for now is, if all these lines are correct, we should close the hearing tonight and issue an ORAD. And I make a motion that we close the hearing.
Do they, any?
No, they're not.
Well, I'm just gonna open it up to them.
Unless you are.
They have a something.
Yeah, I know, no, I know, but they still have the opportunity.
We're good.
You're good, okay.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I make a motion that we close the hearing and have Beta Group issue an ORAD for this property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want the last remaining?
Did you bring a copy of the Lot 6 and 7 plan as well, for just that?
6 and 7 was for Oak Street or...
It was already, yes, for Oak Street.
Yeah, I have Oak Street.
Yeah, if you just wanna give them so that Charlie has a copy of the stamp plan, do you have that, Charlie?
Yes, I do.
That's, that's for Lot 4, but for Lot 6 and 7, remember when you were waiting to issue? Yeah.
I've got one I can clearly read.
Yeah, yeah, you just need one copy, right?
We haven't issued an order of ORAD on this lot, because it wasn't stamped by PLS, but it is now.
Yes, all set.
Robert Anthony Paluzzi. I should tag your name.
Okay, so...
This one will be issued?
You closed the hearing pending getting the map?
This one? Yeah, we closed it.
Okay, that was the 14th, but you closed it.
And you did prepare an ORAD.
Yeah, yeah, that one's all done, yeah. Yeah, I already sent that to you.
Okay.
All set, guys? All set?
Yes, I'm all set.
All right, Michael Wheeler. No Michael Wheeler?
I'll move that we continue the hearing till January tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
I get you, Doc.
Yeah.
Andrew Dyer.
Yep, yep.
There you go.
Ready to go?
Oh, wait.
How good is it?
Okay, all right, I'll take it and head out. Do you want, do you want help with the Zero Broke Streets Order of Commission, or do you want...
For...
Solid, yeah, you, okay.
Good night, Laura.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you look for Brandon?
Yeah. Good man. Yeah. A good one. Good man.
You have thick skin, Lloyd, wear a leather jacket and you couldn't camp out there. The jabs would just bounce right off.
What do you got for us?
Well, for the record, my name is Michael Cosco, I am a registered engineer in Land Survey in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts here this evening to present a draft plan for Mr. Andrew Dyer on 2673 Park Avenue in the town of Dayton. I apologize, the last time I had inadvertently or confused this meeting with another one, and I sent the butter notifications out with the wrong date. So hence, I have for the commission, one, the butter notification cards, I have the list of the butters that came from the assessors with their drawing that they do, and I have a copy of the ad.
Okay, with payment, payment.
And I'm getting, they never come to this commission without having a legal payment. There, the bill has been paid.
Yep.
And additionally, with this procedure, it's a Chapter 91 Waterways License, and part of the procedure is that not only that I file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, but I notify the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the two immediate butters. So I wanted for your records to give you those people that were notified, and also the ad in the paper, which is not your ad, but the ad that the DEP Waterways Division requires, was also in the paper, but that one's been paid for too. So everything's been paid for.
That one cost you more than 100, 100 bucks.
Yes, it did. Yeah, it was, it was longer. You, you guys are brief, the state's always gotta have it a little bit more. That being all said, Mr. Dyer has purchased 2673 Park Avenue. We were before the commission previously where he wants to raise the house, the existing shed, and rebuild it according to a new modern structure that's, meets the floodplain requirements. What he'd like to do is put in a 75-foot-long pier with a 3-by-20-foot gangway that goes gangway that goes to two eight by sixteen foot floats. The gangway and the floats would be seasonably taken out of the water, so if the river does freeze, which I know it runs in there all the time, I don't think it freezes much, but that, it would be taken out seasonably. These are the plans that were generated for the chapter ninety-one license. We have received comments from Calis Fragata from DEP. Most of the revisions were basically housekeeping. One of the things that he requested was an order of conditions from the commission so that he would have his portfolio full of what he needs to render a decision. I did do soundings out here, went out in a kayak, it seems like from, oh, I'm sorry, the boat ramp that's there, we researched if there were any chapter ninety-one licenses historically that were issued, we couldn't find any. So part of this application is, that is also a jurisdiction of the chapter ninety-one program, that in order to close that face with a boat ramp went down and, you know, try to get granite to somewhat match the wall so it's aesthetically pleasing, that needed to be filed. So this plan is actually the, the dark, the gangway, the floats, and to close off this opening, which was previously, looked like it was used as a.
It's about twenty, it's about twenty feet wide, isn't it?
Yeah, maybe fifteen, you know, let's say fifteen to twenty, because what it does is, as soon as it comes off the water, I believe, if my memory serves me right, it kinda skinnies down, and with mean low is down at the, you can see a little bit of river bottom, and you can see that the rack line is up at the top, what's narrowed down to maybe about eight to ten feet. So.
Yeah, it flows right up, right up to the edge of the, up to the top.
Right, so.
The top wall has to be repaired to.
So it would be a, we initially had it, DEP wanted it changed from a six foot wide to four foot wide. And so we changed that, and then we further have gotten another letter from them that, you know, the copy.
The additional plans you submitted were.
Yes, they were four. And so, you know, part of what they want is the copy of that ad, that, you know, for written notice of any interested parties within the next thirty days, that the, their list of certified mail, not only to the abutters, but the zoning board, the planning board, the selectmen, that that, you know, has been satisfied, and mean low, mean, mean high water on all of the plans they wanted, and a couple other housekeeping items, like putting on that this is a dark pier and gangway plan, but also a, to close off the wall that's there. So with that, if the commission has any questions, you know, on this project, I'll be tried happy to answer them.
On a low tide?
Yeah.
The floating portion, is it going to rest on the mud?
No.
Even on the moon level?
Yeah, I, from being out in the kayak and holding the stick and everything, right against the wall, the high watermark is about four point three.
Four point three?
Four point three. When I went out about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty feet, it was minus twelve point seven, so this about, that river drops right off. It's, it's not a very shallow river, I guess with all the flow over all the years and draining all that area, it, you know, has quite a deep.
Okay, so you're, so the dock is gonna come off of your.
Up high.
Your rebuilt wall, and then, now that's gonna be stationary in the beginning, and then you're gonna have the, it's gonna be floater, how far out?
The dock itself is seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
The gangway is a three foot by twenty, and then the two floats are.
Okay.
Two, are connected, two eight by sixteen floats.
Okay, so they're, okay.
So the permanent structure is called seventy-five feet long.
Okay, alright, so that's gonna be elevated up.
Elevated, so anybody kayakers, or somebody walking the shoreline can pass underneath.
Yeah.
And that there is the, you know, the ordinance of, was it sixteen twenty, that to fish file and navigate, that providing that you got legal access, that you can traverse the shoreline between mean high and mean low water.
Yeah.
So yes, that is, you know, it's elevated so that, I noticed there were some oysters in the area, if somebody knows where there's an oyster bed and they park, I guess there's a park or something down below, and they, legal access there, and they gotta, you know, walk up the river to get to wherever they know the oysters might be, they can easily pass under this structure to, to, you know, maintain that access, as per the ordinance of sixteen twenty, I think it was.
I make a motion that we close the hearing, issue an order of conditions.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, thank you so much for your time this evening.
You're welcome.
You don't have any real pools in there, do you?
Well, let's see, this one has an inlet and an outlet, and it keeps flowing.
Up to this.
Okay, great, thank you. We wore everybody right out and they left.
Probably for the year.
When are you gonna start building the house?
I haven't got the building permit yet, for some reason he doesn't wanna give me the building permit till I demo the house. I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of that.
No, we always, we've had issues with people who demoed houses.
You demo the house and there's a.
And then there's some kinda thing comes up. It doesn't make sense to me.
Machine's going there tomorrow, I'm delivering it myself tomorrow morning. Be gone by the weekend, the house.
Good luck. I know what you're doing.
Yeah, well, yeah, you get rising temperatures and rain for Saturday, Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not happy about building in the west of, what are you gonna do? I'm just kinda hoping that. My granddaughter's on top of me, once it coming down, once it coming down, that's all I hear every day.
So how deep do you have to put your pilings in to stabilize your first floor?
I'll put a four foot foundation, so four foot will be covered, and then there'll be a concrete floor over it, so there's no pilings.
Okay.
You know, it'll just be four foot foundation, four foot up, four foot, four foot down, four foot up, and then piers on this, on the corners. So it's just, you know, the ten inch foundation, so that whole thing, a little bit wider footing on the block, so.
He was looking for six feet, because when he gets in his wheelchairs, he gets older, he wanted to be able to go down there.
Exactly, no, it wasn't really the wheelchair, it was the cot, the beer.
I know it's tough to carry a lobster pot when it's at, it's over forty.
I got a little compartment in my kayak, when I see that cot going down, I'll.
Right, stop over.
Refrigerator will be in the basement down underneath the house. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Michael Boyer.
Now we have a patient man that wants to talk to us.
You must be Mike Boyer.
Yes.
Come on, sit up here with us for Christ's sake. What time is it? Eight thirty, we've been here for an hour.
It's really, it's going faster than I thought, actually.
Where are you on Oak Street?
Nineteen seventy-two, right next to the Sanson Farm.
Sanson.
We're talking.
Oh, okay.
Which is now.
I know where you're at.
Okay.
Which is causing me a ton of problems.
It crossed the street from the Sanson Farm?
Next door. The Green Colonial?
That way. You're north of the Sanson Farm?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just north of the Sanson's property line.
Right.
Okay.
Every other department here has ended up sending me here, that's why I'm here.
Who?
All the other departments. I met with Mallory Aaronstein, she told me to get in touch with this board. I've been dealing with Jim Agia, he was my original contact. Back in January of this year, first week, we had a storm that gave us about five inches of rain, and my yard flooded from the farm. I thought it was still owned by the Sanson Estate, 'cause he's passed, his sister's passed.
Right.
I didn't know Ken Arujo had bought it.
Oh, I didn't either.
I didn't know that until I come down and I talked to Jim Agia, and he said, oh, no, he bought it in, in May or June. Well, back in June, one of Ken's guys went in there and ripped out a bunch of vegetation, made this big, it kinda drops down now.
Show me on the map.
He took eight dip grading in there?
He's been tilling. My property used to be higher than the farm, it is now level, in some spots the farm is higher, because where he tilts it, let's see. Okay, so, this is my house, here's the line right here. All of this used to be there. The farm used to cut across through here, as of these pictures. This picture in two thousand and ten, this part of the farm wasn't even being used.
Right.
Kenny just started using it a few years ago. Last June in two thousand and seventeen, he ripped out all of this vegetation here, it's piled up over here, and the first week of January, there was this much water sitting right here, over into my property, it went, oh, I got pictures of it actually, this is the second, this is the third week of January, that's my backyard. My backyard, that's the side yard, right here, where my leaching field is, that's four to six inches deep. That went all the way.
Right, your leaching field?
Right here.
No, no, on the map.
On the map, right where the water is, all right here, where the water is. So when the water went from here, across, out to Elm Street, dumped into Elm Street, went into the town basins, which dump, go, they go under Elm Street, dump into that cove on Mendoza's, and end up in the pond behind the old St. Peters.
Yeah.
Well, along with the water, Jim, Jim Agia and Tom Ferry went and looked at the damage to my yard, and they said, well, how long has this been going on? This looks like years of damage. I says, two storms in January, one was five inches of rain, one was four inches of rain. So they estimate about four million gallons of water went through my yard in those two. I have ruts that are this wide and this deep in my yard now.
This water runs right out to Tony's lane? Tony's way?
Oh, it goes, Tony's is right here.
Yep.
So the water came across and down, it went right up to, can't see him there.
Read the water go before.
It went right up to the trees, he's got, he planted trees here.
Yep.
In front of the trees, he has an underground drainage system for this, there was just way too much water.
So, this has never happened before?
In two thousand and ten, we got fifteen inches of rain in two weeks, my yard didn't flood. It's been since Ken went in and took all of that out.
Two thousand and ten, we had a hundred year storm.
And now, what is it, NOAA, National Oceanographic?
Yep.
Is saying since two thousand and ten, we've had forty, forty percent of our storms are three inches of rain or more, and they estimate it's gonna get worse.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's take, okay, right, I wanna go to this map here. So he, he, your house, where, where's your house now?
Right here.
That's yours, okay. So he, so, there is a trench here now, there's already underground?
If you stand at Elm Street and look, the land goes like this, and pitches into this corner now. That was all vegetation, it's piled this high on his property right now, still there land, it's just a big pile of it, it's rotting away.
How did he, how did he grab that out of there? With what?
He's got a blue tractor over there, farming tractor, that he just, he had his guy, his, well, I don't know, if he did, his guy ran it in there, I could hear the tractor, I couldn't see the tractor, until he came out, almost on, into her property line, and then he just went in there and ripped it all out with his tractor, with his bucket.
With the bucket?
Yeah, he just dug it all out, piled it all out.
Was this wetlands? Was it, it wasn't wetlands, but, but there was flow of water, and so now this water is going, instead of go, where, how was it going beforehand? Just, just kinda.
I've never had water from there before.
No, no, but it went somewhere before, did it go down this way and back?
No, the water, the water used to come from this part of the field.
Yeah.
This way, so when Tony Rodrick built this property here.
Yeah.
The planning board had him put a twelve or fourteen inch berm right here, and he planted those pines. And the idea was the water's gonna come down, hit these properties, run along that berm, and then he has an underground drainage right here.
I see.
That dumps into the street, underground, into the street and goes over here.
So now, that's being, that has been blocked off by his trash?
No, he's got all that stuff piled up over here. But this used to be a road that the Sansons used to use to get around the whole farm, there's like twenty something acres of land there. That's all being used as farm now, he tilts all that in. So all the property that was the farm was lower than mine, from the last several years of tilling, three or four years of tilling, it's all the same height, and over here it's higher. But the water runs this way, and it runs this way, so the water pulls up here, and now it's running into my property. And Jim Agia.
Have you talked to Kenny?
No, I didn't know he owned the property, so I came down here, and upstairs told me to talk to Jim. Jim talked to Ken, Ken was gonna come and talk to me, according to Jim, he stopped over my house two, two weeks later, he says, has he been over to talk to you? I says, no, I haven't talked to him, he says, he told me he was coming here to talk to you, he didn't realize that was gonna be a problem, he's got a solution. So.
Okay.
Since then, three meetings that Jim has had with Ken, Ken's called him that morning and canceled. So I met with, with Jim, with Tom Ferry, and with Miss Aaronstein.
So what he really has to do then is to put a trench, a trench in here to let any water, as if it's gonna flow this way, it's gonna flow off your property but in through here. Okay, that's what he's gonna have to do. Now, because there are no wetlands on the property, this, I mean, we're guided by wetland vegetation and vernal pools, as you know, and all of that, this would not really become our active, an act, a part of our activity, because it's not wetlands, but, you know.
How about stormwater runoff, though?
That's already.
Because I, I contacted EPA, they told me to take it up with Concom of Town, because of, of the pesticide and fertilizer, and he sprays all sum along, all that dirt, the wa, all of this water, when it was coming into Elm Street, was as dark as this table, going into the town basins.
So he's, so he's losing a lot of soil on it too, so it's, it's to his advantage to, to control not only that for your benefit, but also for his own benefit.
Yeah, it would, I mean, it looked like chocolate milk, running into the, you know, into the street.
Charlie, on that.
I've talked with him before, I went out there when I just returned from the hospital, with my broken hip, and I walked around and I looked at it, and that, actually, it's, it's all upland. I looked through our bylaw, there's not a damn thing that we can do about what, what's happening.
How about the stormwater people?
That's, is that the selectmen, the stormwater?
No, the stormwater committee.
They got a stormwater committee.
But they, they would have to be the ones to.
Well, they're concerned with stormwater, that's running out into the street, but that runs on the road.
It ends up on into the road, and it ends up into the pond behind St. Peters, with all my chemical in it.
If it was something that we had acted on, you know, the guy built next door, we always include an order of a condition in our orders, that if it contributes water to an adjoining property, you have to do something about it. But we don't have that, that, we can't do that now, because he hasn't filed with us, he doesn't have to file with us. So technically, I mean, we can't do a damn thing. Send him a letter?
Okay.
I'd be happy to.
Now suppose this water wrecks my, my leaching field.
Yeah, that's.
You know?
Then if he has, if he has altered it, then it would have to be a civil suit on your part. Okay. Okay, before it even gets to that, why don't you take a drive down to William Street? And say, hey, Ken, I got a problem. Here's the problem. Show him the pictures. Tell him, tell him you've already contacted EPA. And the first route is for him to be a gentleman and to correct the problem that he has created. I think you're going to get a lot better results doing that than, than going from one department to another, to another. You know, I, I know you're, you're hoping that we can do something, because it's not wetlands. It's not our jurisdiction. But, you know.
Well, like I said, Mallory sent me here, and the selectman's office sent me here, saying that this is conservation.
We're not trying to blow you off, but there isn't really, you know what I mean?
So again, Mallory says she's now been in touch with agricultural department?
Okay.
We have an agricultural committee now.
Committee which Ken is head of.
But, see, he would have to, you saw Jack, he left the area when we had the solar panels, because it's in a butter. He would have to do the same thing. He would have to remove himself and let everybody else act upon it.
Have you had any contact with him at all?
No, I went up there a couple of times. I think they were closed, it was just, it was dead there, but.
There should be Christmas trees and everything else up there now. Whether, although that might be his daughter, you know, but, you know. Really, the best thing I would, it's just to make personal contact with him.
It's coming this, this way across the yard.
Yeah, that hill is actually like, yeah, it was, it was this deep coming over that hill.
I believe it. It was so deep, he didn't want to go outside and dig the picture.
And that's the smaller, that's the smaller of the rainstorms. The last, the first one we got, this is my bulkhead. The water came about 10 feet from the bulkhead.
All right, because really, if there is damage, then it's because he has altered it.
What's that?
That runs over your septic system?
Yeah, right here, my septic, the leaching field.
Yeah, that's, that's going to fill right up. And, you know, it's something that you don't want to have to get involved in, a civil suit.
Right, right.
But, but I think, you know, he would be a gentleman about it and, and correct it. But, you know, why hasn't he done it already? I don't know. Maybe he's way.
Well, I thought, I thought when, when, when Jim had stopped up at my house two weeks later and said, oh, he didn't realize there was going to be a problem. He's got a plan. He's going to stop over and talk to you.
I mean.
Well, that's what he told Jim apparently.
But now, if you, if you push the issue and you stop and talk to him, it, it's going to definitely get things moving. What do you think?
All right, yeah, yeah, I'll stop up there.
Okay, all right, you know, because you've done it long enough. We've had a couple of big rainstorms, a few big rainstorms this fall.
The last one we just got, he's, I mean, he's tilted for the window so it's flat. But we've had so much rain, it's already puddling up all over.
I know.
And it sits.
In my backyard is wet and.
I would be willing to.
What's that?
Since he's appeared before us with this problem, why can't we send Ken a letter?
Oh, we should.
Saying that we, we.
We talked to him.
And a butter approach.
He's got a problem.
That showed us some serious water on our problems. And he needs to do something about it. At least he'll have some contact from a town board or commission.
Yeah.
Right now, nobody's talking to him.
Mallory got in touch with planning board, trying to dig up something, you know, oh, well, maybe, maybe you, years ago filed complaints about this, and now you're just trying to stir up something here. And I stopped over there the other day, she's like, I can't find anything.
Your house has been there for quite a few years.
I've been there 13 years. And now the back corner of my yard, where the water comes over, all the lawn is gone.
It's, it just, it just seems like a, a little swale would, would take care of that.
That little area in, in the property where all that water's building up, that's where all the vegetation was. It was probably 20 or 25 feet wide that he ripped out.
So it was vegetated and higher.
Right.
Now its vegetation's gone and it's flat.
Lower, lower, right.
And, and that's the problem.
So the water goes there and stays there.
And then it flows to your property, okay.
Because the previous owner farmed it all the time.
Yeah. And now I, I think that upper portion of the property now has an agricultural restriction on it. The state got involved in that. And, or is going to.
But he, but he can still farm it.
Oh, he has to farm it.
Yeah.
No, he has to farm it. It's an agricultural restriction. No, the building rights have been sold. Or they're in the process of doing that.
That has to stay a farm forever from what I'm told.
Forever a farm. And then the land behind that is now owned by the commission. Beyond the power lines. That's, that's, that's near the Council Oaks.
Yeah.
That's under our control.
Okay.
Oh, the town actually.
Yeah, yeah. That's way west of.
Oh, it, it abuts it? It abuts it?
There's a strip in between.
Right, yes.
That's along the Sanson.
Correct. Correct. But that's maybe 20.
Used to belong to Franklin Rogers.
Did you leave those pictures with us?
Yeah, I can leave the pictures with you, show.
That's Christie, that one.
This is a.
Well, I'm going to make a note that we, we sent a letter to the current owner explaining the situation of the gentleman who appeared before us tonight, and tell him that he really should consider doing something about it.
Quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, because once that ground freezes.
To, to prevent. To prevent damage and.
Is this wooded area still there? Or is that the one he took away?
Nope. That's right in that circle is what he took away. Because the farmland used to just go straight across.
Okay, and what's this? This is wooded area.
That's still there, yeah. That's still there.
It looks like there's a little elevation, a little ridge right along the edge here.
It used to be.
Oh, it used to be.
It used to be, but now that he is tilling right up to the line, well, every time he tills, the dirt's moving, moving. So it's, it's built it all up.
That's what happens with farmers, they take it from here, push it there, they don't push it back.
Yeah, he tells it the same way you're reading. One year and out the next, so supposed to turn around every year. We'll send him a letter.
Okay.
That's the best that we can do. Because we don't have any jurisdiction, none at all.
Okay.
I went to a lot, because it's stricter than the wetland act. And there's nothing in there that empowers us to make him do anything that he's not doing already.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, it might kick start him.
But like I say, I really think it would be good if you stopped down and said, hey, you know, this is what's happened since you did this and this, and this is what's happened to my property.
Right, yeah.
At least he's got some history to prove. He's been there 32 years and it's only half a season left.
13.
Three or four?
13.
Maybe 13. It's happened this year. Starting in January.
Okay, Mike.
Well, that one, that's.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, hope we've been of some help to you or at least.
Yeah, yeah. I'm still waiting to hear from how Jim's made out with any kind of meeting that he had.
We meet tomorrow. Stormwater people meets tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so you can bring that up tomorrow then?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, because I know, I know the planning board brought it up with him three weeks ago. They had gotten involved.
If you're going to talk about stormwater tomorrow, then you should have.
Yeah, all right, give me them.
Sorry, we couldn't be more helpful, but.
That's all right. I mean, like I said, everybody's just kind of, you go over there this time, and then they're sending me over there.
At least we're doing something anyway.
Right.
I don't know if it'll be helpful or not, but it'll get, they should get some kind of a dialogue going.
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, my first stop in January was upstairs at the selectman's office. And it was, oh, go downstairs and talk to Jim Agia. He'll take care of that. And then it's just kind of gone on.
I mean, with the wetland commission, they don't know the wetland regulations.
Right, right.
Of St., or local, so.
Yep.
They just know we're a wetland commission.
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ken.
Okay. It's the Anton Rogers.
Have a good night.
You too.
Please go.
If you pass these down, these need to get signed. That's the whole part of our meeting here.
You got to sign every page.
Yeah. We've got two different.
Okay, what, okay. Rogers is, is playing games with that last parcel over there.
Well, actually, Tony, if you read the agenda, Tony has applied for a perk test on, on the lot that we have an enforcement order on. He, he's proved that it was habitant, that people lived in there at one time. Puerto Rican, itinerant farmers. They did use that shed, and they had a septic system, cesspool out, out back.
How many years ago?
A long time ago.
It's, it's, it's.
Not according to our planning regulations. It was occupied, it has a septic system, and he's asking for repair, and they don't have any way to refuse him.
Is the system still lit?
It's according to them. But the new border health inspector demands a full test. He hasn't had one yet. Tony hasn't performed one yet. And he won't get a perk test set until he provides that information. But that's where that lot sits right now. He's also applied for a building permit to extend it out further toward Main Street.
But he's in wetlands. He kind of.
Well, that part is not wetlands. If you follow William Street out to Main Street.
It's only behind it.
But he, he hasn't got a building permit yet, but he's, he's applied for one.
Okay, so who's this Warhurst?
The next one, Warhurst, is Maris Lane, that Center Street Woods.
Who is Warhurst?
He's the new, I thought owner of Maris Lane, of, of Center Street Woods.
Okay.
Apparently, he's only got seed lots on Center Street Woods. When they cleared Lot 1, they had permission to clear Lot 1. They cleared Lot 2 as well, under Jason Lot. And they didn't have permission to do that. So, and it wasn't he, this, Warhurst didn't do the clearing. Matthew Antonio did the clearing.
Oh, okay, yes, all right.
All right. So I issued an, the, the planning board is, is after this guy like crazy. First of all.
Warhurst or Antonio?
Both. But right now, they're dealing with Warhurst. He wants to build on the lots that we have approved too so far. And they won't, they convinced Jim, not the issue of building permit, for bonding reasons. There's money short there. Then they had drainage problems. They had to put a drain in behind Lot 3, 4, and 5, down to the detention basin. Then the new border health inspector found that the detention basin wasn't built correctly because it's not two or three feet above groundwater. The groundwater is right at the base of the detention, the existing basin. So they had problems there. They had to do some rearranging, I don't know what they did. But this guy is, is in the hook. He can't build houses, and he's spending money and not happy. We issued an enforcement order, same being, should, used to file with the commission for Lot 2. But he can't file because he can't build. He's caught in a hard fricket between.
Oh, he's going to go back, he's going to go after Antonio.
Well, he's not happy, but when you deal with choices, that's what happens. So that takes care of that. The border health notice, you already saw that, that we had two lot subdivision. The mandatory conduct of interest training, that's something that just came in. We went through this before, three years ago, I believe.
Well, we got to read it and sign it, or just read it?
I, I don't, I, I can't remember what we did the last time, but I know we all did it and we all passed, so.
I don't, I don't remember going online, but I guess we.
I don't know if you have to go online.
I hope not, because I don't have a confusion. There you go.
Approve payment, that's the two.
Right there.
Okay.
You have to sign, you sign the tops. You'd like to sign the tops, but, oh, you did sit, oh, there you go.
I told him to sign every page.
He finally had you, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough over there when he, he, when he don't hear. We're talking about, we can get him.
So you weren't here last week, I signed Charlie's.
Good. I don't know, I don't know what I did last week that I couldn't remember many. Yeah, you don't.
That's all right.
They put it up, up here, they put it up all the way up.
You missed the third one. You didn't go deep enough.
Want me to keep going on this?
Sure, sign every page.
You didn't, you didn't sign the, you got two more on this one too. You got to sign the last two sheets. The invoices have to be signed.
There's no signature there. Okay, you got two more to do there.
We've worked harder the last month. We've worked harder in September, October, November, and December than we've worked in years.
Okay, so this coming Wednesday, we have a meeting.
Yeah. I have a tie for next Wednesday for Ann and Brad for Cabral, is it?
Cabral.
Jimmy Cabral.
And the squash field at the corner of Middle and Tremont Street is going to be sulfur.
Right, I, I hate seeing farmland disappearing.
Well, I just don't see it was full around, then how did it? I know what you're saying, but.
Well, it's a trust now, a family trust. Cabral was a trustee, but I guess it's his father's trust. I guess it just sick and tired of cutting squash. Some years you can make a bundle, some years you don't make a bundle.
Well, it's, it's, between, between the insects and the animals, Charlie. He probably lost a third of his crop.
There's a case. He's been plowing that thing the same way for 40 years, and it's almost highest of all on Middle Street. Just keeps moving it down and down. If he did it down and he did it back, it would be nice, but start here, start here, start here and go down. I noticed that sometime, just right up to the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll move that we close the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim and Jack.
Good night.
Night, clock. Okay, now to the TV.